The Monday, October 30th, 2023 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called order at 6:00 PM. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if I could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Otte.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Mayer.
Here.
All Commissioners are present. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the agenda? Mayor Protem Davis.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll accept that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that brings us to announcements. I have one for us this evening. Just a reminder to the public that at the Peterwhite Public Library, we will have an early voting site, which will be open Thursday, November 2nd through Sunday, November 5th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And if anyone has additional questions or follow-ups, feel free to contact our City Clerk's office. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address before giving your public comment, and feel free to approach the center podium.
Hello, Gordon Erickson, 133 Danieline Lane. My name is Gordon Erickson. I'm the president of the Marquette City Band Board of Directors. On behalf of the entire Marquette City Band, I'd like to extend our thanks for the City of Marquette's continued support of the band. You may or may not know that in 1929, John Longyear circulated a petition and presented a plan to the City Commission for municipal funding, and the voters approved this funding. We are extremely fortunate and appreciative that the city has supported the band since that vote, and we have an unbroken record of performances since that time. We hope you were able, we hope you were able to make it to one of our performances this past summer at Prescott, not only to hear the band, but also see how much our large audience enjoys our performances. In addition to showing our appreciation for your support, our director, Dr. Stephen Grugan, and I are here tonight to discuss the Prescott Band Shell. As I'm sure you're well aware, the condition of the shell has deteriorated to the point where it is no longer safe for use. Due to this, the band has spent the past four seasons playing on the ground in front of the shell, but this is only a temporary solution that causes a lot of difficulties for the band members and as well as our audience. The builders of the current Prescott Band Shell did a tremendous job in its structural, acoustical, and aesthetic design, allowing generations of performers and audience members to enjoy concerts in a beautiful setting. This structure has served the band and the residents of Marquette well for over 80 years, but now the time has come for a new structure to be built on the same site. In partnership with other stakeholders, initial plans have begun for a new band shell on the same site, which will incorporate similar design features, but also add features more appropriate for a modern performing band. It's my privilege to speak on behalf of the Marquette City Band and show our support for the recommendation of naming a future performance facility, the Peg Hervonen Band Shell. The Hervonen Foundation has been a longtime supporter of the Marquette City Band, in no small part to Peg's lifelong interest in music and her regular attendance at the band's summer concerts. Peg had a commitment to the arts and culture during her life, and that commitment carries on through the foundation and their generous contributions. The Marquette City Band believes the Peg Hervonen Band Shell will serve future generations of performers and audience members for over the next 90 years. We are happy and proud to support this effort in honor of Peg and her contributions to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to presentations. We have one this evening, and that is by our Harbor Advisory Committee, which will be presented by Todd Lay.
I'm going to talk to you about the Harbor Advisory Committee and what we've been working on this year and what we hope for coming. We have currently six members on the committee, which is, I think, a marked improvement since last year, when we only had two. And that's due to recruiting efforts that we made, partially due to some of the issues that we had coming up and got some community members interested, and we were able to recruit new members, so that was a good thing. The Harbor Advisory Committee's purpose, just as a reminder, is to advise the City Commission on shoreline and offshore waters near Marquette with an emphasis on harbor and waterfront development regarding both pleasure craft and commercial vessels, mooring fields, and launch facilities. We meet on the second Tuesday of each month. That's not correct on the slide. And we do meet in the Citizens Forum, and we've actually been doing a pretty good job of having a quorum and meeting every month, so we've made some progress on some issues. Speaking of which, our accomplishments in the last year. We did recommend the 2023 seasonal rate structure in the marinas. We've provided feedback on founders' landing that opened earlier this year. And we worked with the Parks and Rec Department to complete the Prescott Marina rehabilitation, which included a new anchoring system and a repaved parking lot. And they tell me that the docks will not float away anymore, so that's a good thing. For our upcoming year, we really would like to review strategic priorities in the harbor master plan, get engaged with waterfront use policies, in particular, things like the High Wath Water Trail. We have been speaking to people from the Bore Echo project on motor, non-manned launches for that. And that's an interesting project, which we've given them some advice on, but, you know, that's, I think, a ways out yet. We've worked to set priorities for kayak, or to provide an RFP for kayak outfitters so that that can be done safely in our waters. And we've worked on paddle sport safety, so we want to continue that option. In fact, what we've done for paddle sport safety is we've actually recommended kayak safety signs be put up at the marinas and launch points throughout the city. This has kind of been a pet project of mine, so I'm really happy to see that coming to fruition, hopefully before kayaking season starts next spring. We're going to continue to advise on waterfront projects, including motorized and non-motorized watercraft, city, you know, with issues regarding sea marinas, New York Dock, and any use, really, of city harbor facilities. And we're happy to take on anything the City Commission thinks they would like our advice on, so keep those problems coming. For example, we've been working on, like I said, community recreational use of the waterfront, in particular kayak safety signs, motorized and non-motorized recreational watercraft, commercial watercraft. We did hear about rates setting for the cruise ships that come in. Winter recreational trends on the waterfront or water. We did advise on the sauna project that somebody had brought in, in terms of an appropriate place to do that. Couple of things that we've been working on currently and want to continue to do. We did work on a brainstorming session for ideas for the Cinder Pond Marina and fuel system replacement, which is coming up very soon. Those facilities are aging out, and they really need some rework. We came up with a pretty good brainstorming list that we passed on to Parks and Rec so that they can bring it to the attention of any engineer that's working on that project. And currently, our current project is to work on marina rules that we think a rules refresh is a good idea, and I think we've got a good group of people on the committee now to provide that feedback on the current rules. So hopefully, those are the things you'll be hearing from us in the future. Does anybody have any questions that I can try to answer?
Any comments or questions from the Commission? Mayor Protem Davis.
Thank you, Todd. I think you brought us some good news, knowing that the committee has gone from two members to, was it six or seven?
Six.
Six. And looking at that list, I know they're pretty engaged community members. I was curious to say, and I know that one of your specialties is kayaks, but what kind of safety signs, what kind of things are you going to say in this kayak safety?
It's a good question. We modeled it, I don't know if you've ever been to Pictured Rocks, but we started, we didn't start from scratch. We started from the kayak safety signs that the National Park Service has put up at Pictured Rocks and some of the kayak launch points there. We thought it was pretty good standard of care and best practices to go with what the National Park Service has done. And it's going to say things like, "Use the right boat." You know, we really think on Lake Michigan, it's appropriate to use sea kayaks. On Lake Superior, I mean, it's appropriate. I was just down on Lake Michigan today, so I'm sorry, it's on my mind. Lake Superior, it's appropriate to use sea kayaks and not necessarily recreational boats that don't have the right safety features on them. To dress properly, and to consider that when you are out on the waters, especially if you leave the harbor, that you're not really going to be able to land very soon, so you need to really consider things like the weather, the waves, and how you will get help if you get in trouble. So that's what we've tried to put on the sign.
Thank you. I don't hear of too many bad incidences with kayaks, but I do know that there's a certain real danger in that, so I appreciate that. And I know that even in Wisconsin, they've had, you know, families missing because they're not prepared, so thank you very much. I'm curious whether or not you had reviewed any of the waterfront safety things that we, or if that's not in your purview as the Harbor Advisory Committee for the swim safety.
We have not spent any time on swim safety. We did, like I said, spend some time on the sauna project and kind of gave some recommendations about where we thought it might be safe to be swimming. In particular, the place that they had chosen, we thought, wasn't safe. But we haven't looked at, say, the life jacket moner program, or the throw lines that are out in certain places on the city waterfront. We haven't looked at those sorts of things, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Yeah, number one, thank you for all you do. It's a thankless task, I think, as you know, being on any committee and trying to make progress, but you guys are doing a great job on it, and I know it is appreciated. A couple of points, I remember trying to work the High Wath Trail in probably 15 or 20 years ago, so that's been an issue for some time of trying to get our hands around how we can integrate that. And I would certainly ask you to continue to wrestle with it, because it's a great concept. The other one that you see popping around once in a while is the concept of a green marina. That is a DEQ, I believe, push from Lansing, and apparently, a number of places have accepted the program, which involves certain steps we have to take as a city for our marinas, which you might take a peek at that.
Okay.
And see if there's a way we can get greener than we are.
That's a, that's a good point. You didn't go that that is a...
And lastly, never lose sight that we're a port city. And incredibly, there's people in town that don't realize that. Some of the new folks moving in have lost that concept. They see the water, they see the city, but they don't understand that there's ships on the water that come to the city, and the interuse that occurs between water and residence, and big ships, and little ships, and sailboats, and everything that you see out there. So please kind of keep that in mind and hammer it home when you have an opportunity.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thanks for the feedback, appreciate it.
Anything else from the Commission? Thank you for the presentation and coming over tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, that, and that, with that, that brings us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that brings us to new business. Item three, City Clerk, for Commissioner Larson, travel reimbursement. If City Clerk, if we can get the background on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Larson attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Traverse City, October 18th through the 20th, 2023. Following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Michael Larson, check number 1008663 for $419.56 fiscal effect. Total travel costs are $419.56. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2024 commission travel budget. Recommendation: Approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Larson in the amount of $419.56 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Commissioner Larson in the amount of $419.56 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And I guess, all those abstaining? Yeah.
One.
Motion passes six to one. All right, that brings us to new business, item four, which is the naming of the Peg Hervonen Band Shell. City Clerk, if I could get the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Hervonen Foundation has approached the city with a proposal to donate $1 million toward the construction of a new band shell at Prescott Park. As a condition of this donation, they request the city name the band shell, the Peg Hervonen Band Shell. The foundation has agreed to provide funding in the amount of $100,000 during the 2024 fiscal year toward the design process. Staff has included this in the 2024 approved budget. Per City Commission policy 2005-01, naming Parks and Recreation facilities, the request was forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. At their October 2023 meeting, the board reviewed the request with supporting documentation. After discussion, the board voted unanimously to support the request to rename the facility. The Hervonen Foundation was established in the 1970s by Ray and Peg Hervonen after selling the Marquette bottling works in South Marquette. The foundation has supported many social and cultural activities in Marquette and Elgin Counties, and they look forward to utilizing this naming opportunity to help share the story of their family. Fiscal effect: The initial donation of $100,000 is not contingent upon this action. The remaining $900,000 in revenue toward construction services will be donated by the Hervonen Foundation if this naming opportunity is approved and the construction of the facility moves forward. Recommendation: Approve the request from the Hervonen Foundation to name the future band shell at Prescott Park, the Peg Hervonen Band Shell, and authorize the mayor to sign the naming agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this agenda item? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we approve the request from the Hervonen Foundation to name the future band shell at Prescott Park, the Peg Hervonen Band Shell, and authorize the mayor to sign the naming agreement.
And do we have a second? Mayor Protem Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hanley?
I'm just very thankful that the Hervonen Foundation has stepped up to help us with this large problem we have in the city, and I'm really excited to see what the band shell will turn out like.
Fantastic. Mayor Protem Davis?
Yes, you know, one of the really nice things about being here in Marquette is the culture of philanthropy that we have, and the Hervonen Foundation has always been right up there as a foundation that contributes a lot to the community, and here we are again. I'm really grateful to them for recognizing the need for a new band shell and very appreciative of a major donation. I have no doubt that this community can raise the remaining funds for a new band shell. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only comment that the Hervonen Foundation often flies under the radar a little bit from the ones that we always think about, but they have been an extraordinarily good supporter, I think, of the City of Marquette. They really do great good, I think, often is behind the scenes more than we quite realize. And I think they're very indicative of the type of organizations and type of people we have in this city that are willing to step forward when work needs to be done, when something needs to be supported, when the job needs to be accomplished. And I cannot give a better accolade, I think, to that organization than that comment. Thank you, Your Honor.
I think I'll just add that I would also like to extend my sincere gratitude and thanks to the Hervonen Foundation for really helping us get this band shell back up to where it should be when the city financially just can't do it right now. And it's a very, very generous gift, and I think we're all very appreciative of it, so thank you. With that, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, and that brings us to our last new business item, which is the waterfront safety warning systems. City Clerk, if I could get the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Three out of four of the city's beaches have gone unguarded for the past three summers due to the staffing shortage. Swim Smart Towers will provide year-round, real-time warning, instant contact with emergency dispatch, and controlled access to lifesaving equipment. Swim Smart Technology LLC, the sole source of the towers, has submitted a quote for $95,240 for four towers. Fiscal effect: There are sufficient funds available in the fiscal year '24 waterfront safety budget. Recommendation: Waive the bid process and approve the purchase of four warning towers from Swim Smart Technology LLC in the amount of $95,240. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to waive the bid process and award the purchase of four warning towers from Swim Smart Technology LLC in the amount of $95,240.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think this is the best way the city can go to try to address the shortage we've had in lifeguards. It's been very, quite dramatic in the last four or five years. It's certainly never as good as having human eyeballs on a problem or on the beach, but it certainly goes a long way to adapting the technology that we have available, especially when you consider that we are a smart zone, we do have, I guess, I hate to say that reputation, but if nobody, if we can't make it work here with all the technology we have available to us, then truly, it's not going to happen anywhere. So, Your Honor, I'm very enthusiastic about supporting this. I think it, again, is a great step forward, and I think indicative, too, of the way the City of Marquette always manages to find a way to go forward, to keep making things better for our citizens and our taxpayers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, this is real-time technology and safety, really at its finest, in a time where we really need it, due to really lack of having lifeguards in the presence of those people there. If you, if you go around to coastal communities and just coastal areas in the state of Michigan, you're really starting to see these things pop up quite a bit. As close as US2, I've seen them recently in the UP, unmanned beaches showing basically green, yellow, red, much like the flag system we have now, except it's real-time and it doesn't require somebody to go out and actually change it. So this is a no-brainer for me. I think it's adapting with technology and making our city beaches much safer. I'm 100% in support.
Anything else from the Commission? Yeah, I would just add on this one, I was really excited when I heard that we were going to pursue this avenue or looking to, and, you know, this is a startup that originated here in Marquette from our smart zone. You know, I know some folks get a little nervous when we talk about waiving the bidding process, but there isn't another company that does this, and they have about half a dozen patents, making sure that they're the only company that does this, so get on them. But this is kind of one of those foundational things that we, as a Commission, as a city, really need to look at, and we have a charge to do so, is the public safety. And I think this is a great, a great way to give some local control to our own officials as far as maintaining and making it clear to the public when it's safe to be in the water and when it isn't, and it will hopefully help save some lives, so, yeah. With that, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to our second public comment session for the evening. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Over the weekend, I was contacted by Linda Hervonen about the events of tonight's session, mostly the announcement of the renaming of the band shell in honor of her relative. And I explained to her that it was public knowledge as of Friday at 5:00, and that it would be on television, or be on the YouTube channel, and she didn't know about the YouTube channel, and I told her about it, and I just thought I would give the Commission her feedback. Linda said to me, "Thank you so much, I watched and was very pleased." So that is real-time feedback from a member of the family, and I would echo her thanks.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the Commission. Going to start things off with Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you. I don't have much tonight, but I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse for all of his years of service. This is his last meeting, as he will be terming out, unless he chooses to run again in two years. But I do want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you on the Commission, and I wish you well in all of your boating adventures that you will surely be doing.
Thank you.
I would just like to start to thank, just start by thanking, as a new Commissioner, you know, the city for giving learning opportunities and for being able to go to the convention, you know, this year along with City Manager Kovacs. It provided an excellent opportunity to meet with, you know, other communities of similar size, and larger and smaller, that are all struggling with, you know, governance, you know, of their communities. And so we are certainly not alone in some of the issues, you know, that we are facing moving forward. But, you know, more than that, it came out with a variety of solutions, you know, that, you know, we can think about and reflect upon, that, you know, I'm interested in, you know, continuing conversation with my fellow Commissioners on and other, other members of staff, you know, as we kind of get into it and as I, you know, settle into the role here a little bit more now. And then also, I would be amiss if I didn't thank, you know, Commissioner Stonehouse for his, for his years of service. And even before that, when I was first starting out on the planning commission, you know, he gave me a variety of words of wisdom about, you know, serving on city committees, and that has served me well, and, you know, I'm glad to be able to share, you know, you know, this stage here with him for even a little, little bit, a little bit of time. So thank you again, Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Not much for me tonight, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse also. Two years, I hope you don't come back, that's all I got to say. You know what? Don't mean that in a negative way, other than just, you know, go out into the sunset, it's okay. But, no, I'm just kidding. I want to, from, from my heart, I will say thank you, though, to Commissioner Stonehouse, because really, I probably wouldn't be here today without his, his words of encouragement that he gives a lot of people. I ran for office three times. Commissioner Stonehouse was, was very positive in all three times I ran, always encouraging me to do something else with the city when I wasn't elected, and I took those words to heart, and ultimately, that's why I'm probably here today. So it's, it's huge things from people like him that have kind of, you know, pushed me in the right direction, and I know he's done those things for other people as well. So I appreciate that, Fred, and I'm looking forward to your retirement, and I hope you are, too.
Well, this will start to sound a little redundant, but Commissioner Stonehouse, our community is a whole lot better for having you have served on this Commission your first six years, and then your two years off, and now your second six years, and I'm sorry to see you terming out. You've been a mentor to many of us, maybe I should say all of us. You know, and personally, I will very much miss, you know, all of your history that you bring to our Commission, to the practicality of your decision. Like, he says, he just sent me a note saying he's not dead yet. Like, he says, he just sent me a note saying he's not dead yet. I'll miss your involvement in this commission, I'll still see you in the neighborhood. I also appreciate your humor. And your wise decision-making, and I'll leave it there. But I also want to say that November eleventh is coming up, and that's Veterans Day, and I just, for all of us, would just take a moment, um, to think about all the sacrifices that have been made so that we can have the kind of life that we have here in the United States, and to thank the two people on our commission who, who do choose to serve, and that is Commissioner Stonehouse and Mayor Mayer. So thank you, too.
Of course, I'm going to sound like a broken record, too. So I joined the commission in fall of two thousand seventeen, so I've served with Commissioner Stonehouse, Mayor Protem Stonehouse, Mayor Stonehouse, and now Commissioner Stonehouse yet again, uh, during that time, and, um, we haven't agreed on every issue, and I don't know that it's our job to, but I think that we've come, um, to respect and understand each other's opinion, and I will certainly miss your wisdom. The way I think about you is I think about the light in the lighthouse shining out over our commission, and you're kind of that guiding light when we get too far one way. And, and I might not believe everything you say to get us back, but it's enough of a warning to go, okay, maybe we need to pay attention and see where the rocks are coming here. So I really appreciate that, Commissioner Stonehouse, and wish you well.
Thank you. Now it's my turn. Just, uh, you know, it's been twelve years on, on the city commission in four different runs of three years each, so it's been a while, but let me just ruminate for a second. I've been very proud to be a city commissioner in, quite literally, at, at the service of our public, of our citizens and our taxpayers and our residents. But I also get to think about all the other commissioners. You know, this city commission is as good as it is because we have the privilege of standing on the shoulders of prior commissioners. We're only as good as what they did, as how well they laid the groundwork and allowed us to move forward. And that's a huge benefit that we have, all of us right here, and I think the, whoever you seat as a new commissioner, as, as that time comes, they'll have that same benefit, too. But when you start to think back to the commissioners that have been here in Marquette, there's a whole list of them on the wall back there in the plaque. If you want to take a walk down memory lane, you can walk your way back to Peter White if you want to. That's how long this commission has been here. But I just want to give you a few of the, of the people that have so dedicated themselves over my term, that were my contemporary as commissioners through this period. John Kivela, Don Potvin, Beth Lina, Bob Neme, Don Ryan, Dave St. Anne, Sarah Kimbenzie, Mike Coyne. Mike Coyne's been a commissioner almost forever, I think he holds like twenty years of time on here. Sarah Reynolds, Dave Campana, Tom Baldini, Peter Frazier, Mike Plowett, Paul Schlegel, Jen Hill, Sally Davis, Jessica Hanley, uh, Cody Mayer, of course, Jenna Smith and Mike Larson, too. That's quite a, a list of people. When you understand that each one came to this commission with a toolbox of some way of assisting and helping and moving the city along, and has continued to do that for the last twelve years, and to go back for twenty or thirty or forty years, I'll contend, you had the same type of people that were pushing the wagon of the city of Marquette to keep it moving down that highway. And the great managers I've had a chance to work with, Judy Akala, Mike Angeli, Bill Vida, Karen Kovacs now, that's a rare privilege, the staff that you've had an opportunity to interface with, Dennis Stackowitz, and Scott Kimbenzie, and Wendy Larson, Sean Hobins, Mary Schleck, uh, Ron Keith is our attorney, who's at Larson now replacing him, Mark O'Neill, Kyle Whitney, John Swenson. These are rare and very special people in our community, offering a wonderful service to our residents or visitors, and there are people, you know, I mean, they're the ones that make us look good. They're the ones that, that support us in every day and every way with what decisions we may make and how we make them, and then the next day go back to work. So thank you very much for all your kind comments. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of, of Marquette and to do it as long as I have. And like my note said, I'm not dead yet, so we'll, we'll see if there's something else on the horizon, too. Thank you.
It feels a little weird now that I'm going to also comment, but, uh, you know, I, I don't want to be too repetitive here, but what I would say, um, you know, Fred Stonehouse has really dedicated his entire life at this point to serving others, and it's a remarkable thing. It's not a thing you see a lot nowadays. And although I am very appreciative of, uh, the twelve years of service, and your foundation comments, in a way, you've, you've been a part of the foundation for all of us to some degree. For anyone watching, the public, I've only been on the commission for three years, to put that in perspective, um, to his twelve. But one thing I really, really want to commend and, and make note of is the fact that the knowledge, and frankly, I like our walking, talking city history book, is that you share as much of that knowledge with people as you can, um, so that when the day comes when you're no longer on the commission, some of that knowledge has been passed on, and then we have the responsibility to do the same for newer commissioners coming on. But truly, thank you. You've been a, you've been a very entertaining, uh, friend to work with, and you've been a great mentor, and you've, you've always been a very wise voice to come to with questions, so, thank you. With that, I'm going to throw it over to our city manager now.
Uh, just a, a couple of comments here, and then also, um, speak about Commissioner Stonehouse, but, um, curbside brush pickup has concluded for the year, and we are now in full swing for curbside leaf pickup. And so I just want to remind residents to take a look at the city webpage, um, specifically on the Public Works, um, page to review the, um, map with the zones on when that will be picked up. It is on schedule, it seems to be a beautifully scheduled year this time. I don't think I could say that in a single community that I've ever been with where the leaves are falling and we're actually picking them up at the same time. So, um, the curbside leaf pickup is this week, and then the crews will do one last and final round, only one more round after this week. Um, they will do another round next week. So, um, if you missed that or your leaves have not fallen, you do have the opportunity to drop off, um, your leaves for compost, uh, drop off until, um, I believe the last date is November eleventh for a drop off. But again, please review the website, the webpage for that specifics, but then also, just a reminder, as it's not necessarily stated here, but hopefully we all think about it, please avoid parking in the streets, um, in an area that has curbside leaf pickup, um, for this weekend, next week, especially if there's a leaf pile where you would like to park. That is often how things get missed, and, um, we, we cannot, uh, get back and be behind schedule because I think that the S-word is coming, which is snow. So, um, we need our crews to be done with leaf pickup and moving on to snow plowing as soon as, as soon as next week. So, um, as soon as being done next week, not snow. Uh, and then also, uh, because we will not meet again before community office hours, my next scheduled community office hours will be, um, I believe, November, right after, um, our election, um, so, which would be, um, November eighth at, um, Peter White Public Library from ten until noon. So please come on, come on by, have a cup of coffee, and, uh, let's just hear about what's going on in the community and, um, keep it real casual. And, uh, I do want to mention, um, if I, if you don't mind, I, I want to go back for a moment here and give a lot of, um, praise to our fire department who responded to a community, um, uh, fire here, uh, just this past week and weekend, and, um, I, as with any incident, I always hear how professional our fire department is, um, but they had managed to get that fire contained and down, um, to have the minimal amount of damage as it could, uh, for the building, but then also to make sure it was safe for the surrounding community. So, um, kudos to our fire department and kudos to our, our Public Works Department and Police Department, who also respond to something like this. Um, it is a team effort and is what keeps our community safe, but it is also what makes it such a great place to live, uh, because we have such a wonderful, um, crews, both Public Works and, uh, Fire Department and Police Department, um, working for us. So, thank you. And then lastly, I'll keep it short and sweet for you, Commissioner Stonehouse, uh, it, it's been an honor to be working with you, and, um, I do remember on my first, um, first time here after the interview, I, I bumped into you at dinner, and you already made me so, feel so welcome, and it is so great to have somebody like you representing our city. Uh, you are truly, um, a great representative of the city, but have, you show your dedication and your passion for this community everywhere you go, and, um, I'm excited to see you continue to do that, uh, just unfortunately, I won't be sitting next to you anymore. So, thank you, it's been an absolute honor working with you.
You're welcome.
That's all, thank you.
And with that, the time is six thirty-eight, and we are adjourned.